Superintendent of Schools for the Sanford School Department, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:01. The first school committee meeting of the year in January is designated by our city charter as an organizational meeting where we will elect a school committee chair and vice chair for the ensuing year. Until we elect a chair, I have the privilege of running the meeting.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Special honor for me. I'm really, thank you. I've got a lot of people to thank for this great opportunity. But this is a unique meeting in the sense that we also have a school committee vacancy to fill. So what I'd like to do is take care of that. I would like to appoint a school committee member to fill a vacancy. If you remember, Kelly Termath resigned back last fall, and per the city charter, we're able to appoint a school committee member, but per the charter, it was only good through December 31st of 2023. We then went and researched the charter further to then say what we'd have to do is also, in our first organizational meeting in January, is reappoint a school committee member. So at this time, I would like to look at... I would like to appoint, make the, I would make the recommendation to appoint Emily Sheffield to fill school committee vacancy until December 31st, 2024, per city charter. Will receive any motions to that recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, and so next, in order for that to be official, we have to swear Emily in. So at this time, if Emily could step forward along with our city clerk, Sue Cody.
Yeah.
Yep, for Sarah, if you could come up there. We'll take the oath. Does that one work there, Sarah? Where would you want them for the camera?
Oh, style.
That's good? Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right. Do you, Emily Sheffield, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Maine, that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the charter, ordinances of the city of Sanford, and statutes of the state of Maine, and will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the school committee for the city of Sanford?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Emily, please join us up here at your seat. As I was accepting my congratulations of being chair for the meeting, I realized I messed At this point, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to make the following adjustments to the agenda and move the following items forward to be heard next. We've already heard J1, the appointment of the school committee member to fill a vacancy, along and also the swearing in of the newly elected school committee member. Thank you to city clerk Sue Cody for doing that. The next thing is the election of officers. That will be J2. We'll move one chairperson and two vice chairperson to an adjustment in the agenda. Following that, we'll also move item J3, the appointments for standing committees. Following that, we'll do item J7, the 2022-2023 audit report. After that, we'll move item J8, which is the students who are here to, for a prom venue. And then we will do I1, the academic coaches' presentation. We'll move all of those up so that we can get those and hopefully move right through that so that we can have people try to get you out of here to be able to do that. So our second order of business is to elect a school committee chair for the 2024 year. The chair's responsibilities are outlined in our policy BDB. Some of those duties include acting as the presiding officer at all meetings of the school committee, being the public spokesperson for the school committee, appointing subcommittees, calling special meetings as necessary, and consulting with the superintendent for planning meeting agendas. At this time, I will ask the, I will ask for nominations for the position of school committee chairperson.
I would like to nominate Paula Cody as school committee chair.
I will second that.
I had to remember Emily's initials. Okay, are there any other nominations? I need a, I need a motion to close nominations.
I motion to close nominations.
I second.
All those in favor? Okay, all those in favor of Paula Cody serving as school committee chairperson? Congratulations, Paula. I now turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is vice chairperson, which is J2II. Is that what it is? Election of vice chairperson. At this time, I will ask for any nominations for the position of school committee vice chairperson.
I make a motion to nominate Amy Sivini for vice chair.
I'll second.
Okay. By Emily Sheffield, seconded by Melissa Simpson. Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations for vice chairperson?
I make a motion to close nominations.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor of Amy Sivini for vice chairperson? Thank you. Me too, sorry.
Yes, me too.
Thanks for having me. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
I don't know if I can vote for myself, but that's all.
Congratulations, Amy Sivini.
Tough competition.
Yes. Okay, moving forward, appointments of standing committees. We have the following standing committees on the school committee. Our policy BDA on school committee organization states that the school committee chair, myself, shall appoint members of the committee to standing committee. I am looking for committee members for the following committees. I am appointing to the Adult Education Advisory Committee, Amy Sivini. For the Curriculum Committee, myself and Melissa Simpson. Dropout Prevention is Jen Davy. Personnel Negotiations is Amy Sivini and Jen Davy. Sanford Regional Technical Center Advisory Committee will be Emily Sheffield. Facilities, Grounds, Safety, and Capital Improvement is also Emily. I'm skipping our last names. Policy Committee is myself and Melissa. Okay, Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee is Melissa and me as a second. Wellness Committee is myself. Legacy Foundation is Melissa. Special Education Advisory Committee will be Amy and Melissa. Professional Education and Professional Growth Advisory Committee is myself. Recommendation to appoint the standing committees as listed.
I recommend to appoint as listed.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Seconded by Amy. All in favor? All in favor. Thank you. Okay, let me just make sure I'm following here. Next, we will be listening, hearing the audit report. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you for having me. My name is Christian Smith. I'm a partner at Whipfley. You're a accounting firm out of South Portland, Maine. So previously, before this meeting, we met with the finance committee to go over the financial statements and the results of the audit in more detail, so I'm here to give you a more condensed version of that report and highlights of the results of the audit. So I always like to start off with just explaining the relationship with the audit firm. We are independent auditors. We work for the board. We work with management to perform the audit, and you've hired us to report on the financial statements as to whether they are in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, if they're complete and accurate, and include all required elements and disclosures. So I'm happy to report that the results of our audit is what we call a unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which means that the financial statements include all required elements and disclosures, and they are complete and accurate. So that's what you look to achieve. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give. I'd like to go right into the highlights of some of the numbers and what you're probably most interested in, and that's the general fund, the results of the general fund and the budget to actual as well as your carryover. So for the year ended June 30, 2023, you had budgeted revenues of about $58.3 million. Actual revenues were 57, almost $58 million, so there was actually a negative result there where revenues were less than budget by $371,000. Expenditures budgeted was $59.592,000 compared to actual $58,336,000, so that was a favorable variance. So you spent less than what you budgeted by $922,000. So overall, the results for the year were that you had a decrease in your fund balance by $365,000, which is actually favorable because you had voted in the prior year to use $915,000 out of your fund balance. So you actually, actually had a decrease in your fund balance that was less than planned, and that's a positive thing. And so the result of the year, at the end of the year, you had a total fund balance of $3,850,000 in your general fund. It's important to understand that that fund balance has been allocated for certain uses. $1,450,000 of that has been voted by the, voted by the board to be utilized for reserves, so $1,450 of that is utilized for future costs such as health insurance and special ed costs that have been allocated. There's another $850,000 of that fund balance that has been set aside to offset the fiscal 23-24 budget. So when you take away those two numbers, that leaves about $1,563,000, $1,563,000 of unassigned carryover, and that's just going to be available for future, future years' budgets or the, if you think about the 24-25 budget, which you're probably working on. And just as a way to kind of understand where you stand, the state will allow you to carry over up to 9% of your budget and for future uses. So that would, for your school district, that would, that would equate to about almost $5 million. And so you're at, you're well below that threshold, which, which is a good thing, which means that, you know, you're not holding on to excess taxpayer funds, and you've utilized the funds that you have for your, you know, your immediate needs. So there's kind of a wide range of percentages that I see with other schools. I mean, some, I have some schools that are lower than you. I have some schools that are higher than you, but the important thing to understand is that what you have remaining is, is a healthy amount. It's a sufficient amount, and it's less than the maximum that's allowed by the state. I pause if there's any questions or other comments on that before I go forward.
What is our percentage?
2.64%. I also wanted to make, make you aware of the results of other parts of our audit as well. So in addition to the financial statement audit, we're also required to audit your grant funds in compliance with federal requirements. So this year, we tested the ESER program and the Title I program. Happy to report that there were no findings and no issues with those, the test that we, the tests that we did for those funds as well. We're also required to submit a report to the state of Maine Department of Education about your compliance with Maine laws and regulations as well as your financial data that's uploaded to the state of Maine and whether that's complete and accurate. And so there, again, there were no, no findings, no noncompliance with Maine laws and regulations. So and, you know, to sum it up, the audit went very well. There were no issues encountered in performing the audit. You have a very good finance department, and, you know, they work well to keep the finances in order and as well as get through the audits that is required each year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I would just add, Christian, thank you. We did have a workshop prior to this meeting to go a little bit more in-depth to the audit with that. Thank you for giving us those overview of the high points with that, and I just want to also reaffirm your praises of the finance department and our business administrator, Cheryl Fornier and her team for all the work that they're able to come back and be able to do on their end. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Recommendation to accept the 2022-2023 audit report as presented?
I'd recommend to accept it.
Thank you.
I second it.
Seconded by Amy. All in favor? All in favor.
And I would just want to echo what Mr. Nelson said. Thank you so much for all that hard work and to Cheryl, thank you. It's a lot of work that you did.
It is a lot of work.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will be discussing prom.
Sure. So next up, agenda item is to approve the 2023-2024 Sanford High School prom venue. And if it's okay, we'd like to invite junior class officers up to be able to come up and present that.
I'm Alex Lemay, class president for the class of 2025, and I'm here to talk about the selected prom venue and highlight why we chose it. To begin, the selected location is Spring Hill, located in South Broeck, about 20 minutes away from Sanford High School. We selected this venue as it had a 300-person capacity and a large dance floor with additional room to sit down, tables as well, and additional room for seating, and outside deck and lawn space, as well as a great scenic area for pictures, and plenty of parking outside, so we wouldn't run into any problems with that.
It's also on a lake.
Oh, pond.
Pond.
Any questions or comments for our students?
Give them what to say?
Okay.
I don't know if we said this, but the date was May 3rd and...
Friday.
On a Friday, yeah.
Ticket pricing? Can you tell us what you're thinking for ticket pricing?
Right now, we're thinking 70 to 75. That will include a full dinner and dancing.
With a photo booth and, yeah, and it would be a sit-down dinner before the dance or during the dance. It would start at 7:00.
Do you feel that $75 is a reasonable amount? Do you think that there will be enough students that will come to the prom? That seems a little high. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just wondering.
I think especially like with prices rising recently, I know, I think, two or three years ago, some, there was a prom also at Spring Hill, and their price was $65, and I think like with prices rising, I think 70 to 75 is a good, because it also includes a whole dinner, which going out to dinner, you'd pay about that plus your prom ticket that I think would be pretty good, reasonable.
I just, I have real reservations about $75 a ticket. Are there any mitigation efforts to be made to try and lower the cost of the ticket? I think 75 is really a lot to ask on students.
So with our budgeting now, we have all of it listed out, and we've, the 70 to 75 will be the max for right now, and that's expected as we go into the future for that to lower. So the 70 to 75 right now would be the highest, and as we go deeper into the planning and such, that would go down instead of increasing.
Is there anything you could share with us tonight that community could help in mitigating those costs? Is there, could you, could you break down the costs and how you are justifying the 70 to 75 at the moment? Like, what are your expenses at this time?
Do you want to take that or don't you?
So we'll just do, we'll go through like the pricing and what we've done for all of it. So for the police, it's $500, and then just the down payment for it was $1,000, right?
Yep.
And then for food, we spent...
Yeah, $10,000, that'd be $40 per person, reaching a 300-person capacity.
And that was the minimum that we were able to spend on food there. And then DJ was $1,000 as well as...
Photo booth for sure. The photo booth for three hours, that would be 7:30 to 10:30, was $899. That would include props and staffing to run that photo booth.
I'm sorry, how much was the police?
500.
I just wanted to mention this venue being in South Broeck, we have to use South Broeck, South Broeck Police Department, and they may very well, due to their staffing, have to contract out to York County, which means we're at the, their fees for what their contracts are. We went off Sanford's, which is $66 an hour for a minimum of four hours, when we were estimating, and 2020's prom at Spring Hill spent $500 on their police.
Can I ask, does Spring Hill have an option of dinner or something else, or it's just flat dinner, you have to?
Yeah, you have to.
And then deeper into the cost, we have 150 for the king and queen, like stuff, the crowns and such, and then 2,000 for decorations and rentals, and 2,500 for favors, and then 300 for marketing tickets and posters. And that would conclude the budget.
I'm just curious, what are you all thinking for favors? I'm not sure if, I don't know, 2,500 for favors seems a little excessive, but I don't know what you're planning, and you would know better too.
I mean, I just think, I think 65 is, should be your, your point of ticket prices. That's just my opinion. You guys came here and asked us to vote on the venue. Obviously, the cost of the venue plays a role in the ticket prices, and I just feel like, given, you know, the community asks where we are financially, how many, the increase in turkey baskets, the increase in all these other fundraising efforts that we needed for the community, the homeless, I just feel like 65 for me is where I'm comfortable at. It would be really hard for me to see them go any higher than that, and I know that that would be a less profit for you all, but I just feel like this is sort of where we're at, of where the location is. So that, that's just my opinion. I don't know if anybody else has.
Yeah, I would echo that, that I'd feel more comfortable with a $65 rather than a 70, 75. I think that's a lot to ask our community. That's just an opinion that I'm throwing out there to you all. Melissa, do you have anything to say? Emily, do you have anything else?
I want, I just want to say, I, you know, I agree, and I know that we're here just to vote on your location, but I do hope that you value our opinion on cost of ticket, and if you could find any way to shave down that money that you're, you know, you're budgeting for like favors, and that way, you know, I just know from my daughter's experience, she was that 2020 class that did Spring Hill in 2019. The only thing that she saves and is in her room right now is the photo booth photos, all the other stuff. I think I'm stuck with the mug in my, back of my cabinet, you know? So just really, I think, look at what you consider, you know, for party favors, maybe that's some place that you can, you know, cut down on costs, because I do struggle with, you know, I think it was a struggle for the student body at 55 last year. I know personally, myself, I did pay for some, I don't have any kids in school, and I did pay for some student tickets last year who couldn't attend because of finances. So I'm just, with asking 70 to 75, that's just another hurdle that kids have to overcome to be able to go to their prom.
Agreed. I echo. Go ahead, Melissa.
The only thing I would mention with that too is if 100 students that would go at 65 don't go at 75, you're actually not gaining any profit anyways. That would be all I, mathematically.
Just to add to the $75 price ticket, with the, along with the dinner, with our marketing plan, with students, like, if they were not to understand, like, that 75 would be a lot, we would include in our marketing plan that, that comes with the dinner and like a photo booth and everything that we'll be having at the prom.
Go ahead, Amy.
I think I'm good.
Okay. Okay. If there are no other questions or suggestions, recommendation to approve the 2023-2024 Sanford High School prom venue as presented. So moved. Seconded by...
Can I just make a short amendment with that? With a strong suggestion that your class will look at this a little bit deeper and try to keep ticket costs lower than what you are anticipating now. So I second that motion.
I would also like to add and echo what you just said, Emily.
Same.
Yep. Please, just look at it and see what you can do. All in favor? All in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys. I know it's here racking to come talk to us, so thanks for coming.
Prom is a lot of work, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want, or you can go home, do your homework with that. All right, thank you, folks.
Okay, so now...
Nope, we're going to the coaches coming up, and they are...
Okay.
Right here, I1.
Okay, moving forward to I1, academic coaches' presentation.
You really don't have to stay, but they, if you don't want to...
If they want to stay, listen to it.
This is on, right? Okay. I'm Jennifer Daniels. I am the district K4 math coach, and so I am here today with Maurice Glafani and Chrissy Crowley, who are our two literacy coaches.
Everything that we do, students come first. So anytime that we're talking about students, we really need to do the best that we can to get to know them and their personal needs. So one of the first things that we do is assess students. So one of the first things that we do is assess students. We do this frequently in all different classrooms, all different settings. Once we've assessed, we've assessed, we're able to set goals. And then we're able to really provide some research-based effective strategies and interventions for those students. We constantly are helping teachers monitor progress. And we're really working collaboratively with the teacher and the ed tech to make sure that those students are getting everything that they need to be successful, because we do believe that all students can succeed.
One of the things that we do and attend in all of our elementary schools is our MTSS meetings. So this is a collaborative team that includes administrators, support staff, coaches. And our goal in that is to help assess, we look at students, we assess students. We look at that data to also create goals and effective interventions within the classroom. So we're trying to help focus in on that tier-one classroom instruction. And we're not only supporting students, we're supporting teachers and helping with, also our ed techs have resources for their small groups. We continue to monitor, we reflect, we reevaluate our goals every four to six weeks. And our goal is to ensure that all students have the supports needed to be successful in their classroom.
To clarify the role of what coaches do, we are partners with our teachers. We are in a nonevalutive role, so we walk in and we support them with what they need, and we work alongside them. We support all teachers, not just new, but right up through veteran teachers. We also help implement any new research-based curriculum, the instructional practices, to deliver good practice instruction. A lot of our coaching, it's focused on student data. It's not looking at the teacher, it's looking at the student data. We take the student data, we assess, we look at students' strengths, we look at their needs, and then that's the focus when we go in and we work with the teachers on how to help student success. We have, we work on reflection, collaboration, working on improving. We can sit and we co-plan with teachers. We can co-teach, sometimes we model and have them watch us, which helps support them in that role also. We look at student work and we can assess work together, and we can take that and then create next-step lessons.
We really just, I mean, it truly is a partnership, and we do such amazing, like, thinking together. And, and that's really what built all of this. So when we talk about professional development, we work constantly with, this is Lambert over there. We're constantly researching, we're digging into books, we're going online, we're having deep discussions constantly about what effective research-based practices are, what that looks like in the classroom. We then take the knowledge that we're constantly gaining and are providing professional development for teachers, ed techs, special ed, and just making sure, you know, that could be after school, during ERDs, that could be, you know, summers, PLC time, professional learning community time. And we're just making sure that everything is supported in the classroom. So often, as a teacher, you go to these amazing professional development opportunities. You get all of these great ideas, and then you get back into the reality of your classroom, and all of those amazing ideas get shelved away because you just get back into your, your groove. And so we're really making sure that we're supporting within the job to make sure that that new learning is being practiced inside of the classroom. And we work really hard to make sure that we're staying up with the philosophies, you know, all of the research, and just trying to make sure that our students are getting everything to the best of our ability for making sure that they can be successful. And we are all lifelong learners.
One of the things that we both keep up to date is our websites. So this is a place that houses information for teachers to access. It has different links to professional development that we have offered. We just try to keep this up to date, so it's a one-stop shop for our teachers with all of our resources that we have or have shared out with them.
We were very limited with time, because trust me, we could have said a lot more of what we do, because we're very passionate about what we do. And I guess the other thing you could have added was all the professional books that we read to keep up on our spare time and, and implement that in the classroom too, and do like book groups with our lovely boss over there. But yeah, we're just very passionate about what we do. So I guess at this point, we could take any questions you may have.
Excellent job, and thank you. We do appreciate being concise in terms of that. I know I've noticed and I've watched and seen the professional development you've been delivering to our teachers, been very, very impressed with that. Do you mind, though, kind of talking about what schools you work in? And can you kind of go through like a typical day with that? Because sometimes the coaching model, you think that that's happening like after school or if it's happening during a teacher's prep period, and that's not the case. You're actively in the classroom. So do you mind kind of walk, at least giving an idea of what a typical day, a typical week looks like, and the schools that you're able to come back and, and work in and hit?
So I'll start. I am in all three elementary schools. I try to, to be in the classrooms when teachers need me. So I try to prioritize with what coaching cycles I have in place and happening. So I could be working with a kindergarten teacher in the morning and a fourth-grade teacher in the afternoon. And we have our weekly MTSS meeting, so I try to be there. And we also support our Title I staff monthly during their meetings too, and support our students and teachers in creating goals in those meetings. So sometimes I'm meeting with a teacher to co-plan during a, a planning period. Sometimes I'll be in the classroom teaching or co-teaching a lesson. So that's, that's my day.
So I work at MCS, K through grade four, and I split Pride Elementary with Christie, and she works at Carl J. Lamb. A lot of what we do is bringing back the MTSS, if when we go to meetings, their weekly meetings, and teachers will come up and they'll bring up students that are not receiving services, and they have concerns on, and they don't know what the next step should be, because what's happening in the classroom. If there's no growth, then they turn to the coaches, you know, what can we do? And then that's the point where we will make an appointment to work with a child, do some assessments that we think are appropriate, and then we'll turn around and meet with the teacher and say, here's the assessment, this is what we're seeing that this child needs, and here are the resources to do it. If you need help with us modeling, or sometimes we pull kiddos, that's what we do. We did work with kindergarten, some intervention before they went into title, and we did bring up some of their skills with letter ID and sound, so that less of them went to title coordination. Currently working with some ESOL students right now in third grade. And in fourth grade, there's some new teachers that we're supporting with modeling lessons and modeling small group and, and preparing small group lessons just to help them feel supported. What do you want to add? There's just so much.
There is a lot. We're very, very busy throughout the day. But we're trying to use the Diane Sweetney model, which is, again, it's that true partnership with teachers. So if there is a new curriculum that a teacher is implementing, we are in there. Like, I am in one, two, three unit cycles. And a unit cycle is like you're in there for a longer period of time. So I get to chance to talk to the teachers every day, we're co-planning together, we're literally co-teaching. So, you know, collectively, we're better. You know, we're able to, to brainstorm together and to come up with different ideas and look at the data, come up with different perspectives, and really tailor our instruction and support teachers that way. Especially, you know, new teachers that come in, often, you know, they're, they're, they've got scaffolded support there. We're there to give all of that advice. We're kind of like, if you've ever opened a curriculum, they have little sidebars on the side. Like, we're like the little coach saying, okay, this is what we need to do during the mini lesson. This is how we transition, this is how we get to the, you know, the main point, and we want the kids in practice. And so we also do mini-cycles, which is a smaller amount of time. But if a teacher just needs like interventions, often I'm in the classroom and we'll plan the intervention together, I go in, I model, then the next time they try, they get to model. So again, it's just a true partnership of coaching. And in between all of that, we're, we're assessing, and we're trying to meet with teachers, and we're at all of these MTSS meetings, trying to be a support there, just making sure that, that bottom line, our kids have everything that they need.
Yeah, I think, thank you, because a couple of things. Prior to going in your coaches' role, you were all teachers for us, with us, and, and as you can imagine, outstanding teachers for us. And I mention that because I know I've been in other districts where sometimes you have a coach, and it's more like, I'm here, come see me. And oftentimes, you'd walk by and see them in their office a lot. I don't even know where your offices are, because as I'm walking by, I see you out being able to do that. And I, and I point that out because I think that's important, is that that model that you mentioned is sometimes you've got something, but you're in there to see those cycles, to really see it gain momentum, and to be able to do that to support our teachers for that. So, thank you.
I, I don't have a question, but I just want to say that, you know, you can tell that you're really passionate and you love what you do. So I appreciate that, and the work that you're doing is really important. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll echo what Emily says, because, you know, with your, I, I remember when you came last year with your websites, and we were all like, ooh, they're so fancy, and they're gorgeous, and, you know, so thank you for that, because that's a lot of work. I could never do a website, I wish I could. One question, when you were mentioning the schools, and knowing that fifth grade not that long ago was in the elementary level, and now they're sort of like at the middle school, but not in the middle school, do, do you ever have staff reaching out for fifth grade for sort of some coaching and newer teachers needing sort of like help with kids that maybe are new to the district, aren't really on grade level and such?
So I can answer that. There have been a few times where Beth has asked me, I taught fifth grade when I first started here for six years, and a lot of those teachers were my colleagues, I worked with them. And there are times where I have gone up there for their ERD, and I have gone in and supported them with benchmark support, resources. Even on the teacher workshop day, we've had some, I don't know, some high school teachers, or, yeah, we support, I mean, yeah. So we would like to do more, but honestly, I don't know how far thin we could get stretched, because even when Christie was talking, talking about unit cycles, I've, I've started so many of them, but I can't finish them. I get pulled in, like, now you're in kindergarten interventions, and then these ESOL kiddos, and then you have to like assess these other kiddos that are coming up at MTSS. There's just not enough time in the day. We could use more coaches, so. Maybe one, I know, it's just, there's so much to do, the need is so great. And yes, we did really enjoy, I'll speak for them, that we did enjoy being classroom teachers, but having just twenty-five children for a year, we reach so much more in this role. So, and that's another thing that, like, I think we're all so passionate about what we do, because we are reaching, like, they're all our kids, and we just get to, and then we get to see them go through the grades, and we can support them as they go up through the levels, so, yes.
I'm also going to piggyback off that to say that we, through program implementation, we've had some of our, where fifth-grade teachers come to our trainings. I know that we opened that up to our pilot crew, and so we had Josh Allen, who came and joined in on our trainings through that. So, and they reach out when they need resources to us, so.
I had a question, but you answered it. My question was, what do you, what is a challenge that you face a lot? And it's the time, it's time, sure, and the getting pulled everywhere, so.
It's hard when, you know, like, a lot of teachers teach literacy at the same time. So that's, that's a struggle too, is trying, and I can, I don't know how she does it in three buildings, it's, it's.
I was thinking that when you said.
But I do have to say, like, with literacy, there tends to be a lot more resources. Like, we have a lot of resources that the district has, has out there and available, but it's really helping the teachers pinpoint what is the best resource, resource to match what the needs are for the students. So that plays a big role in it too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to say, I echo what they said, which is, you can tell, you can feel how much you love what you do, and it's so important, so, thank you. I just think, when I was a teacher, I wish I'd had you guys as a resource.
I say, I have to say, I love when teachers say, thank you so much, I appreciate you, like, that's.
It means a lot.
It means a lot when teachers, and they do, they say that, like, thank you, I appreciate you, we appreciate you, our great, it's just, they, they do, they, they feel supported, so.
I'm getting to like this mic thing. No, but I also, I, I kind of want to echo what they're saying and, and thank the teachers and the district, because really, it's us working collaboratively. I mean, I learn from the teachers just as much, like, and, you know, the district is open, and they're so responsive, and they're constantly listening to, you know, what we come in and we say, guess what we just learned, you know? So I just want to thank everybody else too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Oh my goodness, can you imagine? That is a resource. Okay, now we are. We are at D now. Okay. Okay, moving on. This is going to be a long night. We are moving on to D, item D, which is approval of minutes. So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the minutes as I'm going to present them right now. Monday, December fourth, twenty-twenty-three executive session, four-thirty PM. Monday, December fourth, regular meeting at six PM. Wednesday, December sixth, executive session at eight-thirty AM. Monday, December eighteenth, executive session at nine AM. And Monday, December eighteenth, executive session at five-thirty PM. Looking for, I mean, recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Melissa, thank you very much. Seconded by?
I would love to.
All right, thank you, Amy. All in favor? All in favor? Public comments? Is there anybody waiting? Anybody want to say anything? No? Okay. Communications?
We did receive a letter from a parent of one of our high school students who was expressing some concerns about the schedule, Sanford High School, some of the changes, just noticing the impact that had gone on with that. So that was something that I reached out to that parent, as well as working with the admin at the high school, just to be able to continue to be able to monitor that. Those were not, those were probably some things that I think were not unexpected in terms of how we were looking at making that shift, especially for some of the students who were used to that schedule and going from four to five and looking at that. So appreciate that person reaching out, but we're also on that, working with that particular student to make sure everything is, is supported and okay.
Okay, thank you. Item G, committee reports. We don't have any tonight. Superintendent reports are next.
Sure, we'll start with student representative reports. Emma's running solo this evening, so before we head into the spotlight, are there any updates, Emma, that you'd like to provide?
Um, yeah, I had a few. So first off, Environmental Club, they're kind of in the works with their recycling project right now. So they're trying to add some recycling bins into the cafeteria, so we're looking to add in one for cans and one for bottles. And so, and they're going to be partnering with EcoMain, which is, they're like a redemption site center, and they have a location in Sanford, Maine, so we're kind of like coordinating that right now. But the, the real plan is to kind of start at the beginning of February, and so that's something that's kind of in the works right now. And then also, this is the last full week before final exams start at the high school. So some students, they're going to have like a block-five final on Friday, depending on like the red and white days. And then, but like the bulk of the finals are actually next week, starting Tuesday. And then also, the Sanford Backpack Program is currently running the Spart Mart. So that's been kind of going on since October. And it's a free market for all Sanford High School students, and it's filled with a large variety of fresh foods. And it's also free of charge, which is really nice for students to have access to. And then their hours are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from two-twenty to four.
Nice job. Thank you, Emma. Emma, you and I can kind of tag-team the latest Sanford Spotlight. This is, has not been released yet. Here's its opening presentation this evening. One of the things, at a recent school committee meeting, our athletic director, Zach Lemon, came before the school committee. Uh, one of the things, uh, at a recent school committee meeting, our athletic director, Zach Lemon, uh, came, uh, before the school committee and talked about the idea of, um, establishing a Hall of Honor, uh, for Sanford High School Athletics. And so here's an article that is, uh, talking about that. It's up and running. I think we're getting to the point where they're now trying to get that out into the community. So various stakeholders can number one, be aware of, uh, of it. And then also about a process about starting the nomination process for people who may be considered. Amy, anything you want to add on that, knowing that I think you're on that, um, on that committee that Zach has established?
I mean, um, I know it re, I think the past week it's been put on social media, um, about just sort of letting the community know about the Sanford High School Hall of Honor. Um, and it, it's a very, really, really well-written article. And so I actually like, I already reached out to Zach. I was like, it was excellent. And he, he said, it's not me. It was Sam Boncley that actually wrote it. So great job, Sam. Um, so you know, the article says it all. It's just, um, we're excited and we'll be looking for, um, people to honor.
Excellent. I'll take the next one, uh, Emma, about the middle school. You can take the math team. How's that? So, uh, Sanford Middle School, a couple of students making a difference during the holiday season. We wanted to highlight Josh Fogarty. He baked cookies and cakes and other treats before Christmas, helping raise money for the Toys for Tots program. And then classmate, uh, Grayson Perro set up a cocoa stand to raise money to buy holiday gifts for the York County Shelter Program resident. So outstanding right around the holidays. Uh, very proud of those students.
Uh, also the Sanford High School's math team is off to a pretty strong start for their 2023, 2024 season. So they've already won two regional meets and Sanford is currently ranked 30th out of 120 participating schools in Maine. So that's, um, really cool. And then, um, there's also a letter link there to read more about that.
Excellent. And then, uh, working around, uh, just updates in our schools at Margaret Chase Smith School. We had 141 of their students participated in their winter reading challenge, uh, with that. And so excellent, uh, for that. Carl J. Lamb, uh, they're celebrating their January theme of honesty. And through that assembly, they're also honoring, honoring, uh, students who were really, um, displaying empathy last month as far as that. And then the Sanford Middle School, um, students came together, eighth graders hosted Lego drive, uh, in honor of their friend Chase Fromwiler, who, um, passed away last September. They were able to come up with 40 boxes of Legos and they donated those to the Barbara Bush Children's Hospital. And over at Sanford Pride Elementary, they also, uh, students were supporting a giving tree project that benefited families in the Pride School community. They were able to collect, uh, some winter essentials and warm clothes and toys and books and games to provide for those in need. As all with those schools, uh, those all lead right into a link that you can access to also show, uh, their newsletter and see what else is going on in their school.
Um, and then also the Peer Helpers hosted their first annual kindness awards, which was, uh, right before break. And it was in the Performing Arts Center on the 22nd. So it, uh, not only recognized the acts of kindness, but also promoted an atmosphere of inclusivity and fun through various engaging activities. And that was something I kind of got to be a part of and it was very cool to be a part of. And there was a lot of great feedback, which was really good. And then also the SRT hosted, uh, the holiday party for Carl J. Lamb. So the Skills USA students at Sanford Regional Technical Center had hosted an annual holiday party for the Carl J. Lamb, uh, school on Thursday, December 21st. And so they, uh, participated in many activities and also students got to explore the SRT's fire truck, ambulance and police cars to kind of give them a little preview to that, which is really cool. And so there's also a newsletter link there to read more about that.
Sure. Uh, that was excellent. That was a fun event. It always is. Uh, SRTC and their students do an excellent job for that. Uh, also kudos to the JMG program at the middle school for organizing, um, the holiday food drive competition. Uh, and kudos to our middle school students and families for really going out of their way to participate. That's an annual event. Uh, and this year as always was another, uh, very successful one in, uh, doing that. And they were able to distribute, uh, more than 40 meal baskets, um, for that. Also wanted to announce over at Sanford Community Delta Education, they have an upcoming author visit, author Ashley Riddlin. She's going to be visiting, um, SEAE on January 27th. Uh, and she'll be able to read her newest children's book, Bad Butter, uh, with that. And, uh, families will receive a free signed book, uh, for that. Additional books will be, uh, there for purchase as well. Uh, as always, we always try to link into the Spartan Times, the high school newsletter to see what's going on there. And so they were featuring the Winter Ball, uh, upcoming, setting to, uh, return. And that's going to be, uh, later this month on January 20th, um, for that. We also have an employee spotlight, uh, this week. It's, um, Margaret Chase Smith School Special Education Teacher, uh, Bethany Combs. And so you can learn more about Bethany. And then, uh, also highlighting another, um, uh, performance coming up to the Sanford Performing Arts Center. Uh, it looks like this one is Fruit Fries Like a Banana, um, for that. That's an award-winning variety show. A trio musicians, uh, come up with that. And so that's something that will be coming up, uh, for the Sanford Performing Arts Center. You can, uh, for tickets and more information, be able to see that. Also kudos Performing Arts Center for the performance they had last Wednesday, uh, with that, uh, sold out show on a Wednesday evening, uh, to come back. I was, uh, unfortunately I wasn't able to come, but I heard, uh, wonderful reviews. I know Brett was very, Brett Williams is very pleased, um, with that. Just some other winter reminders. I think we had a few disappointed people today that thought we might be having either no school or a delay. But kudos to our maintenance, um, department as well as our, um, custodians and our contractors. Uh, they worked hard yesterday, um, and early this morning to be able to come back to make sure our, uh, schools were ready to open and, uh, safe to be able to do that. So just a reminder for people, uh, about, uh, the different weather, uh, weather, uh, reminders, um, for that. Right now it looks like, um, there's something coming on Wednesday, but I think we're going to be okay with that. Early indications are. I don't know what people's apps are showing them in terms of the percentages, but, um, we shall see. And then also, uh, focusing on attendance, that's something that is critical to our students' success. Uh, for that, we can't stress that enough. Uh, and we appreciate all the efforts that families make to be able to come back to get their students there. Uh, we also talk about free meals. As you know, right now breakfast and lunch are free, uh, for all students in all of our, um, schools with that. So we also make sure we are emphasizing that. And then just some other announcements listed there as far as, um, whether it's hiring. We also try to, uh, post some community announcements. We don't get all of them, but obviously there's sometimes people are really trying for us to be able to remote those, be able to do that there, uh, for that link. And also if there's any other story ideas out there, please reach out to us to let us know and make sure you download, download the Spartan app to be able to make sure you're staying current with all the things that are going on. And we also try to make sure that we've got, um, different links to kind of just really, uh, keep communication going on. This Sanford Spotlight is just not something that's for our families. I do everything I can to push this out to our community, uh, the different service organizations, uh, to be able to get that distributed. We also like to do the same thing in collaboration with some of those other organizations. So there's the Main Street Memo. Uh, you'll have an opportunity to connect there from our city. And then there's also some other links that you'll find, whether it's the city, uh, for the work going on there, WSSR TV and all of the different things we have. Sarah, do we have the winter concerts up, uh, with it? Yeah. So if you were able to miss those, those are outstanding. They're at, on the WSSR TV webpage. And then I already mentioned the Sanford Times online, but also there's a link, uh, for athletics in terms of their Instagram page of what's going on. And we also try to link to the Sanford Springvale News, the online that comes out weekly. Obviously they do a really nice job of covering everything going on in Sanford, including the schools. We appreciate that in terms of that. So there's our latest, uh, Sanford Spotlight. We'll be trying to send that out and distributing that tomorrow. Also moving on, we have Field Trip, uh, one to announce. The AP Art in our, um, uh, is headed on Jan, later this month, January 26th. They're going down to the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum and Museum of Fine Arts down in Boston. So what a wonderful opportunity, uh, for those students to be able to, uh, take advantage of that. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that the weather cooperates.
Okay. Moving on, Director's Reports. Beth Lambert.
This feels a little weird. I usually follow Steve. So hello, everybody. So tonight I am just going to give you, um, a brief overview of our assessments. Um, as you know, um, a year ago, two years ago, the, um, main DOE listened to staff, curriculum directors, administrators and said, we need a main educational assessment, uh, test that allows us to get feedback on how our students are doing immediately, not eight months after the fact. So they heard us and that's where they, um, decided to make the NWEA our main or MEA, Main Educational Assessment. So we took them this fall and it's been our, actually Sanford's Universal Screener since 2001. So we've been using this assessment for a long time. Um, so this fall we had grades one through 10 take the reading and math assessments. Grades three through eight and grade 10 are mandatory for the state, for that state federal assessment system. Um, we assess in math and reading. Um, NWEA, uh, says that each assessment will last between 45 and 90 minutes. As you get up in upper grades, um, it tends to take a little bit longer. So it is a commitment by our teachers and our, um, administrators and students, but they did a nice job this fall for us. So what is the MAPGrowth? So it's called Measure of Academic Progress. So what it does, it's a computer adaptive test. A, a student will get asked a question. If they answer it right, they'll get a harder question. If they answer that right, it gets a little harder. If they answer that one wrong, it kind of drops it down a level. And by using that kind of metrics, it identifies the strengths and weaknesses of the student. And it's like a growth chart over time. Whoops, Sarah, you're going too fast. It's okay. And the teachers use that information to, um, group students, identify areas where maybe our coaches might need to strengthen, um, you know, some instructional pieces in the classrooms or a group of students that they might need to find, um, a way to work with them a little bit more. So that's the information that we use. So, okay, Sarah, I'm not used to her running this. So there's, they use the NWEA, but we get two different results out of it. The first is that MAP. That is the MAPGrowth. So our students will take the assessment in the fall. That's kind of our baseline number and that's what I'm going to show you tonight. And then they're going to take the full assessment again in the spring. And for us as a district, we want to see that they've grown over the course of the year. That's what the MAPGrowth test is going to show us. But embedded within that in the springtime are the federal summative assessment questions. So the federal government wants to know, yet they, they want to know that students grow, but they also, their main goal is to know if students are meeting grade level academic standards. So that's what that piece of the assessment will tell us in the spring. So we as a district will get to see the overall growth of our students and we'll also get to see, um, the percentage of them that meet that grade level, um, benchmark that the federal government is, um, is setting up for us. So it's kind of one test, two, two results. Actually saves us, um, some time in the classroom that we used to have to take away from instruction. So. All right. So these are the fall scores. Um, so what I did was I broke it down by, um, schools into the reading and the math. So in previous years I've, um, explained that what we're looking for is a majority of our students to be in the yellow, green and blue, especially by the end of the year. We want to see that the numbers in the, um, in the red and orange, which are the lowest for, up to the 40th percentile. We want to see those numbers decline because that's showing growth in our students. So this is CJL's reading and math. And the 41st, you see on the left where it says 41st and 43rd, that's the median. That's the, um, like right down the middle. So we kind of want to see our, our, um, median be more in the 50th percentile or higher by the end of the year. You go onto MCS now. So here's MCS. And I know you guys got this already, so you could probably see it a little better. And on to Pride, Sarah. And then we have the middle school. So you have to remember, these are whole building scores. So that is grades one through four lumped together to kind of give that overall school score. And so for M, the middle school, it's grades five through eight. That's everybody together, all 828 students that took the assessment. This is what the school looks like. Um, we can also look deeper into the assessments by grade level, by class, even right down to the individual student if we want to. And then the last one is the high school. And so this one is grades nine and 10 put together.
I think that's important to point out as you've coll, if you've kind of, um, combined.
Correct.
We do have the ability with the way the results are to be able to pull this down into, um, by gr, at this specific grade, we can do it also down by class and teacher to be able to do this. And these, uh, these are results from.
The fall.
This past fall.
Yep.
With that is like the starting point for us.
Correct.
And so, uh, what's, can you explain what's going on right now with our schools with NWEA?
Yep. I think that's the next slide, actually. Um, actually no, it's not. It's after that. So what we do in the winter is there, it's called a winter screener. So it's not the full assessment, which is normally between 45 and 50 questions. It's about 20 questions. So it's a brief snapshot to see, are your students still on track? You know, maybe, um, you have a student who's new to the district. You can do the little screenshot or you can also do the full assessment. If, if they're coming, we often have students that come with very little data. And we, we know want to make sure that we, we help support them in the right areas. So it's an opportunity, we could give them the full assessment. It gives us a couple of data points, identifies their strengths and areas that need to be grown, um, and built on, and we can do that. But right now, um, grades three through nine are just going to be doing the screener, which is the short one. Grades K one and two don't have the option of the screener. They have to do the full assessment. But we did purposely hold off on kindergarten. We didn't have them take the fall assessment because it's just too much. They're not used to using the iPads yet. So we kind of, um, told them not to do it in the fall and their first assessment is this winter. That gives them time to get through the process of school, understand how the technology works so that hopefully they're more successful and how they're answering the questions because they're more comfortable. So that's what we're currently doing right now. And the window's from the second of January till the 16th of February. So. Okay. Now you can go back, Sarah. So what are we doing to support student growth? So we use this information to help us, to help us make plans for the school year. Um, so we're focusing on early interventions for students. Um, Steve and I made the decision to have, when our coaches said that they get pulled to do a lot of different things, we said, hey, this is what we need you to do. And they said, okay, which had to rearrange their whole schedule for us. But they worked with our kindergarten students. They took, they worked with the teachers, with assessments, identified those students who were struggling kind of right out of the gate. We weren't just seeing the growth that we normally see in kindergartners when they start absorbing all of this. So they started working with these, um, these students three times a week in math and in reading and working with them. And I looked at the data. We normally have between 40 and 50 students that we recommend for Title One in kindergarten in October, based on initial scores. This year we only had 15. They were able to help support those kids and really, really identify what their needs were, move it forward, set the coach, set the teachers and the ed techs up. Here are the resources you need to keep this moving when I'm not here. And so, yeah, we, they, I, when I told them those numbers, they were like, really? I said, yeah, that is impressive. We were all very pleased, very excited. And because of that, those kids were able to stay in their classrooms. Title One is wonderful. It's a great program, but it, it takes the kids out of their classroom and in kindergarten, you really need them to be there as long as possible. So we feel that this was really a great way to get the kids what they needed, keep them in their classrooms and, um, get them on track. So we were very happy with that. Um, we're continuing with Reveal Math. We are introducing math running records, which is, um, a new assessment. It's a very quick one, but it helps us understand a student's thought process. Fluency, fact fluency plays a big part in whether a student is, um, successful in older ma, in older years in math, like addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. These math running records, which only take, I think, less than five minutes per student, allows the teacher by asking them questions on how did you figure this out, understands their process and helps move them forward from there. It's, it's quite fascinating. The teachers are really excited about it. Um, so it's another data point for us, but it's also another way to understand what the kids are thinking. Cause once we can figure that out, we can help move them forward. Um, and Jenna's been integral in that as well. Um, we have our new Ufly Phonics program that we implemented fully in kindergarten, grade one. Grade one has pretty much started it as well because our students were just, they were just missing so much. And then I also purchased the books for grades two, three and four. And as they feel, as they find out through data that there's clumps of students that need certain things, they pull them in for small group, use that Ufly for a couple of, as the kids get older, they pick up those phonics pieces a lot faster than they do in kindergarten and first grade. So we're trying to kind of fill in those gaps for them. We are looking at a brand new literacy curriculum for next school year for grades one through five, based on the literacy committee work that was done last year. I have some teachers, a small handful piloting this spring. They're very excited about it. So we're hopeful that it will, it will work out and we'll be moving forward with that. And the English department at the middle school is working on creating new curriculum. They're working with me on creating their own units, which incorporates reading and writing, which in their previous curriculum, they taught them separately, which you can't teach, you know, it didn't, it didn't work. It didn't feel right. It didn't feel good for the kids. So they're now creating new units that combine all of those pieces. So the kids are reading, they're writing, they're discussing, they're thinking, they're having those conversations. So I think we're going to see some progress and some positive pieces from there as well. So, yep. So then we have our, our final testing window of the season of the year, which is April 22nd through May 31st. The, the DOE has also heard us that sometimes four weeks just isn't enough. So they've given us a six-week window and there will be a six-week window for those reading and math assessments from now on. What's nice about NWEA is if you give them, here's the window that we're assessing, somehow back in the background of the computer, it knows that if you test a kid on April 22nd and you might test a different kid on the same topic on May 31st, there's going to be a difference because there's been extra learning. Something in the program helps offset that. So teachers were always afraid if they tested their kids too early, they weren't going to score the way they should because they hadn't taught a lesson or taught a concept, but the assessment takes that into consideration. So it allows us a little more flexibility. And that's for everybody K to 10. And then we also get to have the MEA science assessment, which is grades five, eight and 11. That is only a very short two-week window in May. And we've always asked why grade 11 and it's because the science that they're assessing, most kids won't get it until after, at the end of their sophomore year. So they want the kids to have as much science under their belt before they take this assessment. So that's why juniors still get tagged for that one. So, any questions?
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
So a few things. When you were in the beginning of your presentation, when you were talking about the, I think it was the NWEA scores.
Yep.
Whenever those were. I just was curious because I know it just seemed like you had like each school kind of lumped together for the entire school, not particular grades.
Yep.
Is there a grade throughout all three schools, knowing that we're still recovering from COVID, you know, like those kids were what, pre-K kindergartners? Is that sort of like third grade, fourth grade, are they still sort of generally?
Yes.
Still needing work.
You got it. They're the ones that we're using the Ufly, the curriculum to kind of fill in some of those gaps that they missed during COVID. So it is that grade three, four bubble.
Okay.
That we are still, we're seeing growth, most definitely. The teachers are helping them catch up, but that is the, that is the grade level that has seen the biggest, the biggest struggle from COVID.
Yep. And then one thing that the coaches mentioned, and this is probably not the space for it, I'm going to throw it out there anyway, that sort of like, I was like, hmm. When they mentioned at the elementary school levels that teachers, so let's, my understanding from what they said, maybe I'm totally wrong, is that when it's time to do math, that all of the teachers in third grade or second grade are doing math at the same time. And I never, I think I've heard that before and I didn't really think anything of it, like, oh, that sounds great. But then when they mention that, and I think about resource room kids, because I had one, when it's time for ELA and they have to go to the resource room or they need help with reading or writing, but everybody's doing it, the coaches have to sort of spread themselves because all of everybody's doing it at the same time. And then all those kids that go to resource room are like, now, I don't even know what that ratio is, but it must be smaller than what the classroom.
Yep.
So I guess I'm wondering, is that really beneficial for our students, especially in the third and fourth grade?
To have them all like doing literacy at the same time?
At the same time.
They do that to help support resource room so that those teachers don't have a mixture of math and English students in there together. It's okay, this cluster of teachers are teaching at this grade level, literacy at this time, so that way the resource room teacher can support that cluster of students at that time. So that's kind of part of the whole scheduling piece.
Okay.
So it supports that piece of it. Just makes it a little difficult with some of the other supports, but.
Got you.
They make it work.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
You're welcome.
And then just, it just seems like they're testing a lot. So are they, and it just seems like a lot of coordination and I know that we're sort of mandated by the federal government, the state, but so there, four testing, like there's four rounds of testing in one school year?
Three.
Three?
Yep.
Okay.
So there's the fall, the fall and the spring are the big ones. And then the winter, we just have them do the screener as a checkpoint. And then there's the science. But you also have to remember before they started using NWEA, we were still using NWEA because that was our growth platform, but then we still did the MEA, which took up days, like literally days. And we wouldn't get our feedback until like October, the following year.
Right.
So while it was good for the big picture, it didn't help the teachers in the moment.
Sure.
So it actually has reduced the amount of assessments that we're taking. Doesn't seem like it, but it actually has.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's kind of what I was going to ask is how many, with this assessment, the NWEA, how many days in a row are they testing? Are they losing complete days of instructional time? What does the schedule look like?
Yep. For the elementary, it's usually, they can get the reading and the math. They don't do them on the same day, obviously, but it's usually a morning for each of them. So it's not too bad. The middle and high school, the middle school, the way they run it is they have the homeroom teachers do it and it might take a couple of days. And then if there's any kids that need to finish up, they might do it in Spartan time, tutorial, different things like that. Similar with the high school, they use it during, or they give it during an elongated Spartan time to try to alleviate taking up too much instructional time. So they might have two days of extra long Spartan time, but the students will still have their regular blocks, I believe. You didn't take it this year, so I'm 99% sure that's what they did with Spartan time. And then if there's anybody behind or hasn't finished it, or maybe they were absent, then they'll pull them out. And I think, I think Randy White, actually, because it was the beginning of the year. So it's the Spartan transition room, they utilized him to pull them out and have them assessed because the federal government requires us a 95% test rate. Yes. You got it. They're still on our books. They count 95%. Yes.
I can't remember this or not, but is this tied to funding?
Yes, it's tied to our title funding.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Sorry, I'm writing things down.
It's okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have to say, can I just say, I love talking too about curriculum because you always look so, you're always so excited and so passionate about it, so.
And Beth, we can't let you go without saying happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. Thank you very much. Thank, appreciate. I tried to get Sam Bonzi to sing and he just looked at me like, what? I said, we'll work on it.
Next time.
I could, I could, I could. Good evening. I don't, I have just a quick presentation, but just a couple of slides that I think will help clarify some of the information I'm going to share this evening. So my presentation is going to piggyback on what Beth talked about and that is in regards to our ESOL students and the annual assessment that they are underway with. But before we do that, I just want to give you an update on our ESOL enrollment. If you look there, there's a five-year history of our ESOL population. If you look back, October 2020, we had 25 students and that number has jumped to, as of January last week, we are at 118 students with four full-time staff members and one of those staff members is an S position. I just want to note that since September, we've had an increase of 12 students. We've had 12 ESOL students come in needing service and out of those 118, we have 37 new majors. The difference between 2022 and 2023, you may say, hmm, we had 57 students and 58 students with this, but we increased a staff member? That's because in that year, we were starting to see students come in that are in need of greater service. Students coming in that do not have any English, students that are new to the country that are learning English. So the increased need of our students, I just want to mention that. That's really, we have an increased number, but we also have an increased need. So our English learners, learners, we also have an annual assessment that they have to take. That is called the access testing for English language learners. This is an annual assessment that this particular assessment is given across the country. It's a national assessment as four domains, listening, speaking, reading and writing. And each one of those sessions takes 50 to 90 minutes. So it is an assessment that does take a great deal of time. It's administered to all of our students that receive ELL services or ESOL services and all those students that are on monitor status. It's administered students in grades K through 12, so we do not assess our pre-K students. And this is a summative assessment. It looks to measure a student's progress towards English proficiency and these results are really important. They're really important because it determines a student's eligibility for service and their level of service. And I think that, I just want to point out that our students that are in our schools, those 118 students, we don't just willy-nilly determine what level of service they need. It is really done through these access tests with that. So determines eligibility and then it determines how much time they're going to receive, what's the instructional programming they're going to receive. So these are really important. I mention this because I think it's important for you guys to know that these assessments are now underway. They will take two to three weeks to complete. These assessments are done through, with our ESOL teachers, but you may hear some from our instructional staff, our regular instructional staff, that, hey, what's going on here? These students are in our classroom more? This is the reason. Our ESOL teachers are tied up with this assessment. They need to be the ones administering these assessments. So we're underway. They're going to be about two to three weeks. We'll get the results back and really important, I just want you to know that that 118 student number, as we get into the budget season, I think that's going to be important there moving forward because we will have a request for some additional staff and just want you to be prepared for that.
I think the other, good job, Steve. And just to add to that, you've seen, I think, as 12 students since the beginning of, since, you know, because the number that we have for subsidy is based off our October 1st count, but you've seen that we've had a pretty steady increase of students, not like we did last spring, but we are seeing that. And, you know, that's going to be another consideration that we're going to have to take into effect. Yes.
Okay, we are moving forward to item J, new business, J4, 2023-2024 School Committee Budget Calendar.
Sure. So wanted to put this in front of the school committee for approval this evening. We are already right in the middle of the budget process. Starting last week, business administrator Cheryl Forni, our assistant superintendent, Steve Bucy and I have been meeting with directors and principals and going over their budgets line by line. And so we will continue that work for this week and next week. The school committee will start with their budget workshops. We're looking to do that later this month. Monday, January 29th will be our first one. We've selected that date because we are optimistic and expect to have our preliminary state subsidy and EPS funding there, which obviously is a big and important for us. So we'll look at Monday, the 29th. We do have Tuesday, January 30th. That's not confirmed. We hope with our leadership team meeting this week that we'll be able to confirm. I know that the city council is doing something that evening on their end. I'm not sure if it's also going to include the school department. So I'll hold that tentative for right now. We also have a, we have also added Wednesday, January 31st. Right now, our plan is to meet on Mondays, January 29th, Monday, February 5th and Monday, February 12th. Those are the three dates that we're really going to dig into the workshop. We'll be meeting up here. Those will be recorded and the one on February 5th will lead right into a school committee regular meeting on the 5th. You do see Wednesdays on this schedule. Wednesday, the 31st of January, Wednesday, February 7th and Wednesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. Nothing says Valentine's Day like a school committee budget workshop, so says my wife. So we will, but the Wednesdays, we're holding those as like other days in the event that we might need some extra time or need something to go in. But the primary ones are the Monday, the 29th, Monday, the 5th and Monday, the 12th. And those will be right here. Sarah, are you all set up to be able to help us record those that evening? And those will be recorded? Okay. And we will go through, we'll give overviews of our different articles and be able to move through that. The goal is to have our budget approved at the Monday, February 26th school committee meeting. So we do have another tentative, just in case we have to meet prior to that meeting. We've held that out. But Monday, February 26th is going to be an agenda item at our school committee meeting. We'll get that hopefully approved because then it goes right off to the city council. And then those are the joint city council and school meetings, which will take place in Tuesdays in March. Tuesday, March 5th is going to be a, an overview of both budgets. I think Tuesday, March 12th is going to be the school department presentation. And then the following Monday, the city will give their detailed presentation. There'll also be a public hearing that evening at the city council's regular meeting on March 19th. And then the following week, Tuesday, March 16th, we'll do any wrap-up about the city and school budgets. And then the goal is on Tuesday, April 2nd, to have budgets finalized at that city council meeting. And that's where the budget will be, school budget, hopefully approved there so that we can then get the budget validation referendum out. Because the budget referendum this year is on Tuesday, June 11th. We will also have another public hearing on Tuesday, May 7th for that. So that's the budget calendar, looking for some approval with that. That fits with other discussions that we've had amongst the school committee on how we'd like to approach it this year. Any questions?
No, I just motioned to approve that schedule.
Same. I make a second.
All in favor?
Yay!
Can't wait. Can't wait.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Emma, I think you should join us for all of this.
That excitement is a little different than our academic coaches' presentation earlier.
But not as exciting as transportation.
Yes. Because that's the next one. I'm sorry, I've got papers all over the place. Transportation, RFN, Steve.
Okay, good evening. Our contract, I'm here to talk about transportation because our contract for student transportation services expires at the end of June. Due to the size of this contract, we are required to solicit proposals from multiple vendors. And so on October 3rd, Cheryl and I, we issued a request for proposals that were due back on November 13. And so on October 3rd, Cheryl and I, we issued a request for proposals that were due back on November 13th. We did receive two proposals, one from Student Transportation of America, which was Ledgmere, and the second one was from First Student. On November 28th, we interviewed both companies. It was Cheryl, myself, Matt and Zach Lemlin. After the interviews, we unanimously agreed to recommend that a three-year transportation contract be awarded to Student Transportation of America, Ledgmere, with an option to an extent for an additional two years. Our previous contract with Ledgmere for the past five years had a 3% increase every year. This, the bid that Ledgmere submitted was the lowest bid with an increase for next year of nine and a half percent, which is a hefty increase, with a subsequent 5% increase the years after. The biggest driver with that is wages. That is the biggest driver for that. In looking at going with Ledgmere, we, number one, they were the lowest bidder. We have a positive relationship with Ledgmere Transportation. And we, that, those were the basic two reasons why we went with Ledgmere. So Cheryl, I'm not sure if you have anything to add with that?
Yes, so it's a nine and a half percent increase. However, I also want to mention a couple of other items. There are some other increases, like athletics is going up 12% instead of the nine and a half percent. And monitors are going up more by like 42% and midday runs are more like 42%. So there are some other, but those amounts are not as large as the biggest piece, which is the one that's at nine and a half percent. So that's the biggest part of this contract.
And I think it's just important to point out, just for people who may not realize it, in Sanford, we do not own our own buses. I think you'll see a number of school departments that do. And so they take on that, that cost, they take on that responsibility. And so I know where we are in Sanford, we don't, we haven't. And there are some people around us, Wells in York also are people who contract as a contracted service. So in this situation, there are those increased costs, but at the same time, we're not at the mercy of trying to be able to come and, and be able to fund that or find those staffing levels to be able to do that between the maintenance requirements and all of those things that are able to come on for that. I think that's important to be able to point that out. You heard earlier today in Christian's presentation that you're looking at, we saw some carryover. And so there are situations where we don't have that as a reserve account. But I do think over time, we've been able to recoup at least some costs because you know Ledgmere has been not running at full capacity. And so we've had to be able to make some adjustments to that. This is based on, this bid is based on running at full capacity in terms of that. I have that right, Steve and Cheryl with that?
Any questions?
I'll make the recommendation. To accept the bid received from Student Transportation of America for provision of bus services for a contract period of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027.
Thank you. All in favor? Cheryl, November financials.
Okay. So November financials. If you look at the dashboard, we are running about 1.1 million below budget. And we are about 49,000 below prior year or more than prior year. And so everything is going according to our estimates. Revenue is currently at $418,000 above last year. Most of that is due to subsidy. Federal grants, we've, we've had $827,000 worth of revenue and we've had $717,000 worth of expense. Enterprise, we have $675,000 in revenue and $986,000 in expense. I think we'll see a little bit different on that for next year, next month because we have a couple of items that came in. Esser, we have $1.6 million in revenues and we talked about that a little bit through the audit. And finally, the state of Maine has pushed us through a few of our invoices, which is awesome. And our expenses are at just under, just around $700,000 worth of expense so far this year. Our other major grants, we have $28,000 in revenue and $664,000 of expense. We're still waiting for the RUSC grant to send our money in. We've submitted everything and I actually just got an email requesting some more information. So I'm sure we'll get that provided to them so that we can get that money. So it's pretty close. They're looking at our invoice, so that's good. Article one, we're about $61,000 below budget and running about $101,000 more than last year. And everything seems to be going according to plan on that. Article two, excuse me, we're running about $268,000 below budget and running about $54,000 more than last year. I think some of that is due to not having some of our expenses that don't really happen in July and August. And so it's, which is the tuition. And that number had gone up pretty much quite a bit during the 2024 budget. And I think it's just the way we do our percentages to do a budget to actual. I think that's what's making it look kind of a little strange, but it's actually running pretty close to last year, so I'm feeling comfortable with that. Career and technical, which is article three, we're running under budget by 238,000 and we're running less than last year by 168,000. Majority of that is due to Tipper. And Tipper is now no longer a contracted service that we paid 100% at the beginning of the school year. And now he is paid as a teacher salary. So the cost to that is about the same for the full year. It's just allocated differently. So when we do the percentages of how we do the budget to figure out how much of the budget we should have spent by now, it's skewing that a little bit, but I'm not concerned because I know that it's, everything's running within line. So it's just how that system works.
And Tipper's our law enforcement instructor. He retired from the police, Sanford Police Department last spring, so that's the adjustment. He's now a full teacher with us.
And then article four, we're running below budget by about 35,000. And last year, we're right about $4,000 difference. So I'm feeling comfortable with how we're running on that one. And that's mostly our athletics department. Article five, I don't think we could get any closer. I think we're 100 and somewhat, $120 difference from our budget, so I'm not concerned. We're running higher than last year, but some of that is we've moved people around. Beth Laterno, who was not part of that article last year and is now, and the way she's on a July contract instead of September. So it just changes things and it kind of skews our percentages though, but I'm not concerned overall. Article six, we're running about $17,000 below budget. And we're actually running just about 29,000 more than last year, but everything looks like it's running on schedule. Article seven, we're running about $17,000 below budget on that. And we're running right about $3,000 more than last year. So everything seems to be running about the same as last year for that. Transportation, we're running about $5,000 above budget, but $5,000 on $700,000 is just probably a timing issue. And I think it is timing mostly because if you look at last year compared to this year, they are better at their billing this year. I think they've, they've got more staff. And so we've paid invoices on the month that they actually, the month after, because they bill us for September and October. And I think that's, they were delaying a little bit in the prior years. Article nine, facilities maintenance, we're running below budget by 354,000. And we're running below last year by 291,000. And most of that, I believe, is due to Willard Building. We had a lot of upfront costs that we had to renovate that building to get ready for the September start. And so that kind of makes it so it looks a little strange, but we're running within budget. And we're keeping a close eye on all our utilities and everything, and everything seems to be running smoothly. Article 10, we're running right about $7,000 below budget on that. So we're doing really well there. And of course, we always run a little bit less than unless we get a new debt service, which we have not. So we're running $86,000 less than last year, which is interest. Article 11, we're running about $10,000 lower than budget. Some of this is due to we actually moved Sarah into this grouping. And so now we had, went from having one person to having two people. And so another one of those percentages. But everything is within budget. They're running fine. I'm not worried about this one for here and it just, kind of the way that we do our percentages. Makes it look a little funny right now. Adult education is $6,000 below budget. Everything's going fine there. And so, I mean, we know what they've been working on with a whole bunch of people, all the new mainers. So they've been pretty busy. And that is the financials.
Okay. As always, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, where am I? Recommendation to approve the November financials as presented.
I motion to make a recommendation to approve those.
Who wants to do the second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All in favor.
Moving on, no old business to discuss. Next item is resignations and retirements.
Sure, some to announce. First, I'll start with the retirements. Marguerite Cannon, kitchen personnel at Sanford Pride. Marguerite Smith, administrative assistant at Sanford High School. Sue Pettit, ed tech at the high school. And Diane Mitchell, special education resource room teacher at the high school. Those four have given us their intentions to retire at the end of the year. That's going to be a big loss for all of us. They've got a lot of years in to the Sanford School Department. In terms of that, want to thank them for all of their work and all the contributions that they have made, both to students and the Sanford community. A few other resignations to announce. Greg McDougall is a school counselor at the high school. Gabrielle Buckland is a general education social worker for Pride. Rachel Dorr, ed tech one, self-contained at CJL. And Scott Shepard is the varsity softball coach. I do know we have, we'll have a motion coming forward at our next meeting to, for the replacement for Gabby, Buckland, Gabby Sawyer at Pride. That nomination came in last Friday after we already have gone to posting, so. I also have some staff appointments to announce. Jack Mahoney, ed tech three, special education in Esser persist at MCS. We're glad that Jack's staying with us. Jack was in a long-term subposition as a phys ed teacher over at Margaret Chase Smith School. Did an outstanding job for us, so he's able to stay on, very excited about that. Couple custodians to announce, Cody Severance at the, and Donald Normado, both second shift at the high school SRTC, working to get them onboarded as soon as possible. And Abby Hanson is going to be a long-term substitute English teacher for the remainder of the year at Sanford High School, starting second semester. Couple scheduled D appointments to announce. Angela Avery, department chair for the school counselors at the middle school. And Kaylee Colbeth, certification committee as a building level coordinator also at the high school. Have a couple transfers to announce. Tony Bendell moving from an ed tech one in the SEAL program to an ed tech two in the SEAL program. And then Madeline Penny from an ed tech one at the middle school to an ed tech three at the middle school for both of them. And then staff nomination, would recommend that the school committee approve Glenn Hoag as a SEAL teacher for the special education program at Sanford Middle School with a start date as the second semester starts on the 22nd. So looking to approve the professional staff for Glenn Hoag as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, moving on, policies and procedures.
Okay, I have three policies for you tonight that are revisions in the agenda. I noticed there's four listed, but we're only doing three tonight. The first one is policy IHBAC, which is our child find responsibilities. The child find policy outlines our responsibilities to identify, locate and evaluate any students who are five years old now up to 22 for special education services. The updated policy extends the child find responsibilities from age 20 up to age 22. And it adds a timeline of 30 days required by law to conduct child find activities. So when a student enters our district through screening in kindergarten or pre-K, once they are screened, we have a responsibility within 30 days, once they're screened, to if they, we think they are in need of an evaluation, to do that, to refer for that evaluation. And then that policy, we've also updated the legal references. The second policy for this evening is IHI. And this work was done, for this policy was done by Matt Peterman and the SRTC Advisory Council. Policy IHI was last updated in 2016. And this policy adds project selection by the program instructor and SRTC director. The live work form will be included in estimate of expenses and an estimated completion date, which are not binding. A separate final invoice will be issued from the program at the completion of the project. And adds a request for applied learning projects from local tax-supported programs or institutions in the general public. Also adds that learning projects will also require 50% deposit prior to the start of the project for the initial materials. And then there are some other minor language changes. And then the last policy that's been updated is policy BEDB. This updated policy adds information regarding the posting, notice of emergency meetings and the dissemination of supporting materials. We deleted the posting of our agendas in the local schools, the post office, town halls and public libraries. Our postings now are all online and we post them here at the central office out in the hallway. It was really an updated policy we don't think are necessary anymore. And I recommend to the first readings of these three policies. There are no questions.
I make a motion to accept the first reading of policy IHBAC, IHI and DEBD as presented.
I second.
Any questions? All in favor?
All in favor.
Then we have one second reading tonight, pretty straightforward one. And it is procedure BEC-R, which is the executive law procedure. We just changed the title from that, from, it said executive law to executive session procedure. The previous title was exec, executive session law. We changed the title to executive session procedure. And that's it for that one.
I make a recommendation to accept the second reading of BEC-R as presented. Any questions? All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you, Steve. Moving forward, no items for future agendas to be brought up and calendar announcements are next.
Sure, a couple I've already mentioned, but we had a safety committee earlier this afternoon. Tomorrow, the vape tobacco committee has a meeting at 2:45 down at the high school and SRTC. and S R T C. Our next special education advisory committee meeting is going to be on Wednesday, January 17th. The focus of that meeting will be curriculum, special education curriculum, and professional development. And then, Monday, the 22nd, we're looking to have two school committee workshops. Need to finalize those. One is going to be a follow-up workshop after our presentation by the school counselors back in December regarding school counseling and S E L. And also, looking to have a school committee workshop that evening, doing a deep dive on the bridge program in our special education department. So, we don't have times for those yet. We also had a teacher negotiation session earlier today that Amy and Jen and I participated in. Looking to have another session for that. The only date that we could set up that worked for everyone was Monday, the 22nd of January. We also have two student hearings that day, student disciplinary hearings. These are going to be executive sessions. These are reentry hearings for people who are looking to come back into school. We were setting them up on that date because second semester starts on the 22nd, so we'd like to be able to do that. So, the challenge is, we always really try to pack our Mondays, and so here's another packed day. Steve, the question I have to put you on the spot, sorry, is do we have the opportunity to have those student, those executive sessions for those student reentry hearings? Is it possible maybe to have those during the day if we're able to get three school committee members to come in for those? Because initially, we were looking to have them at 3:00 and 3:30 leading into the workshops, but that's really ideally a time for negotiations. We also might be able to have the hearings done at the same time. Okay? So, we might, if we're able to get three school committee members for 3:00 and 3:30, the three I'm talking about would be Emily, Melissa, and Paula, because Jen and Amy and I would be in the negotiation session. So, is that something? We do have Paula, Melissa, and Emily here. If you can look at your schedule. And Steve, we don't see any problems with you running that hearing if we're able to get three members to do that for the reentries?
Yep. I have looked at my schedule, and I'm free at 3:00 and 3:30 on that day.
Okay. Emma, do you know or no?
So, I probably can do that. My daughter has to get to the basketball, but I'm...
Okay, all right, yeah. Yeah, so that's what we're looking at. I guess let's tentatively set that up right now. And then, the workshop times that we want to have that evening for the bridge program, as well as S E L and the school counseling, we could start one at 4. Start the bridge one at 4. Does that work for people?
Sure.
And, or maybe we should probably say 4:30, just to be, to be safe with that. So, we'll start at 4:30. And then, what time would we want to give? I think we have to give at least an hour, might even be a little bit more for the bridge one. So, maybe 4:30 to 6:00, and then, we could look at possibly S E L. I know there was some interest in bringing that back after we had that presentation and all that data. So, why don't we keep that a little flexible for now? And we can flush that out. I can work with Paula and Amy as the chair and vice chair to kind of set that agenda for that, okay? And then, I already went over the school committee budget workshops for that schedule and looking at it. We'll know more about that Tuesday, January 30th one, when we meet with the city. We have a leadership team meeting this Thursday with city council leadership. And that's what we've got for calendar announcements.
Thank you very much, Emily. Aren't you glad you came back?
Yeah.
Right back at it.
And with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right. I second it. All in favor? All in favor? Seven, what are we saying, 55?